I want to call the Grashit County Commission, Board of Commissioners to order and clerk call the roll.
Commissioner Bailey.
Present.
And Commissioner Bailey, my understanding is you're in Inglewood, Florida?
Yes, Inglewood, Florida.
And you can be reached through email or phone?
Everything is all the same. It's just I'm just in a different place.
Commissioner Bunting.
Present.
Commissioner Lumberman. Commissioner Lumberman.
Here.
Commissioner Smith.
Here. I'm still in Okeechobee, Florida. I still can be reached by email or my cellphone numbers on the website of the county.
Thank you. Commissioner Murphy.
Here. Alrighty, I'd like to ask Commissioner Lumberman to give the prayer.
Heavenly Father, we pray that you give us wisdom and understanding as we look over these items that you'd have us deal with today. And Father, help us in all things to put the best interests of Grashit County first. In Christ's name, amen.
Amen. And we'll stand for the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. To the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Born and unborn. Alrighty, any additions or deletions to the agenda? Hearing none, I'd like to entertain a motion to approve the agenda.
So moved. I second it.
Okay, moved by Commissioner Smith, seconded by Commissioner Lumberman. Clerk will call the roll.
Sorry, Commissioner Bunting.
Yes.
Commissioner Lumberman.
Yes.
Commissioner Smith.
Yes.
Commissioner Bailey.
Yes.
Commissioner Murphy.
Yes. Alrighty, Chris, anyone online that appears for a public comment?
I'm not seeing anybody.
Alrighty. Then let's move on to the consent calendar. Board minutes, communications, and recommendations from committees. Entertain a motion to approve the consent calendar.
Still moved.
Moved by Commissioner Lumberman. Do we have a second?
Bailey's support.
Okay, seconded by Commissioner Bailey. Any comment? Clerk will call the roll.
Commissioner Lumberman.
Yes.
Commissioner Smith.
Yes.
Commissioner Bailey.
Yes.
Commissioner Bunting.
Yes.
Commissioner Murphy.
Yes. Alright. Cast. We're up to the administrator's report. Tracy?
Yes, hello everyone. A short report tonight, just because there are many things in the hopper and things that will be coming to you over the next couple of meetings. I will say, not to steal Chris's thunder, but the financial audit is ongoing and I'm sure Chris will provide you a more detailed update about that when it's showtime for him. Fairly significant movement, we think, in the tax foreclosure litigation. And I'll provide you a more detailed report about this litigation at the next meeting. Just to remind some of you who have heard about this litigation and to educate and bring others up to speed. But this is the case where when properties are sold at tax foreclosure sale, the proceeds from that sale are oh, excuse me, I'm going to switch gears on you. It's the wind turbine depreciation schedule. I'm sorry, I've been dealing with both today. Quite some time ago, over a year ago, this case was heard by a tax magistrate, September of 2019. We've been waiting all this time for an opinion from the tax magistrate. And there is strong indication that that opinion might actually issue this week. Now, the issue there, and this is the one that I'll provide additional detail at the next meeting, but this is all about the tax depreciation schedule that is to be used. The utility companies are looking for a more aggressive depreciation schedule. Whereas the taxing entities are looking for a different tax depreciation schedule that would be less aggressive. There's a lot to this, and again, I'll provide additional detail about this case at the next meeting. If the opinion does indeed issue this week, it's going to take a little bit of time to get through it. It's expected to be fairly lengthy, maybe a couple of hundred pages long. And then to fully understand all of the implications, but once we understand this, we're and we see what the tax magistrate has done, we're going to be needing to make some decisions about what we do next. This is a consortium of counties that call themselves the Michigan Renewable Energy Consortium or Commission. Grashit County, as well as other taxing districts, are a member of this, are participating and contributing to the litigation and the funds for litigation. There is an executive group that needs to steer all of this. It's been fairly inactive, but we're going to step it up and as of today, I'm now a member of that executive group. So I think I'll be able to provide you more insider track reports going forward. So stay tuned, but just know that a significant event may issue this week. And after a long, long wait, and that will really have this thing lurch forward. Next, there's been some discussion over the last few months about getting some of the annual reports going to you again. I think COVID really did derail some of those. Of course, Keegan reports to them spring of each year. Provides you a detailed report, both verbally and a written report. That will come later in the spring. Over the next couple of meetings, though, you will be hearing from Tom Clark. We did promise that Tom would be back at about this time to provide a more thorough and detailed report on operations at the animal shelter and through about animal control. And finally, Matt will be attending the meeting in a different way next time around, and he will provide an annual report, a detailed report about IT operations, improvements and operations. So those are coming to you. There may be others, but I would space those out a little bit so that you're not getting clobbered by all of this information in a single meeting. And Commissioner Lumberman will hear some of this. He'll get a sneak preview because we have scheduled Commissioner Lumberman for our new commissioner orientation. That's next Wednesday, a week from tomorrow. And this is the Grashit County program. I think we did, I think for the first time it was for you, Commissioner Murphy. Yes, this is not the more general program that MSU Extension does. So very pleased to have Commissioner Lumberman get a couple of meetings under his belt and then to provide him a little additional information about some of that county departments' relationships and interrelationships in the county operation. So that's what I have for you this time around. Again, there'll be much coming in future meetings, but thank you.
Alrighty, thank you. Commissioner Committee reports. Commissioner Lumberman, anything to report? Any meetings you're at or anything?
Last week I attended both Arcade Township and City of Alma remotely. At the Arcade Township meeting, I asked the treasurer about tax collections and and what last year looked like, what this year looks like. And she made it sound as if last year was pretty normal. And I asked that question just in light of the audit that we're having. But her own thoughts were that this year is the tax for tax season ending in this February, March is going to be way down. She thinks we're going to see an impact, you know, from all of the COVID shutdowns. The other thing that I thought was interesting is at the Alma City Council meeting, they have okayed a group to take over the old Lobdell building for a marijuana facility. And that same group was then at the Arcade Township meeting. And I've got my notes on that at home. I can't remember the individual's names, but the son purchased a Roundup Bar that's at the corner of State and Lincoln Road. And he purchased this facility from his dad, and he's also the principal that's involved in the marijuana facility at Lobdell. And I believe they also own another facility in Riverdale. And they want to take that Roundup Bar and convert it into another marijuana facility. Growing, processing, and retail unit. And there would be some addition and such at that building. Right now Arcade Township doesn't allow marijuana facilities, but they tabled it and decided to take it up at the next meeting. But just made me think that perhaps, you know, if we're headed towards peak window revenue, maybe some marijuana revenue will step up to fill the hole. So I have no idea how big marijuana is in the county, but I just thought it was interesting that it was discussed at both meetings.
Alrighty, thank you. Commissioner Bunting?
I had one meeting with Michigan Works. We're in the process of doing some changing. And so we've got several meetings for the next six, well, the next, every other week for six, six meetings every other week. On Wednesday, so I'll be attending those. Another one tomorrow night. And we're just on the ground floor. We've got a lot of, a lot of stuff to cover. And then I've also had a meeting with Bethany Township, but because of the weather, I had made a phone call because the weather was so bad and school was called off, that they were just going to pay the bills and go home. They also were concerned with roads. So that was the only two meetings that I've had.
Alrighty, thank you. Commissioner Bunting, Commissioner Smith?
Yeah, I, we, I think we're going to have some more expansion of wind project along the 57th corridor. Been in contact with consumers and they're just looking at securing some more grounds to probably likely maybe coming through there. They're looking at some more windows. The building on N57 is just about completed. It should be up and running about four or five weeks, I think. That's going to be where they're managing all that, the windmills that they put up in the two townships out there. And so they have more access to add more to it and they're going to look, try to expand to the west or to the east, excuse me, in Fulton. And Township just moved there. Was it Arcana? It's lost. I can see it on the building. Becky Roseland is one of the, I just lost three.
No worries.
I've been in contact with consumers there, so.
Alright. Alrighty, thank you. Commissioner Smith, Commissioner Bailey?
Yeah, I attended a Commission on Aging meeting. It was our organizational meeting. They had, I think, three or four new members. So they're going to be getting acquainted with what's going on there. We had a report from the dietitian there, Kathy. And I think I've told you this in the last meeting. The staff had gotten COVID, one or two cases, and they had to shut down the kitchen. But because they were so prepared that they, the Meals on Wheels never missed a beat. They had enough meals prepared and put away and in packages that they could keep that up. And in fact, between the holidays, between Christmas and New Year's, they put out over 500 meals, which I thought was outstanding. And so there, that staff is to be commended on how much good work they've done. And they've rescheduled their kitchen staff and they have broke them up into teams now where half the staff works one week and the other half works the next week. So they don't, if somebody gets COVID, they've got enough people to take and continue on. So I thought that was really outstanding. Went to Hamilton Township. I met all of their new officials there. That's a whole, whole new from the supervisor, treasurer, clerk. That was all new, new people now. And I've offered them any of our services that we could help them going forward because they are new and may need some help. So that's been offered. On North Star, had a last minute Zoom meeting. They had one of their members have a child that had COVID, so they decided to have a Zoom meeting. And that was basically it there. So that's my report.
Alrighty, thanks, Commissioner Bailey. All I have is I have a couple of meetings coming up. This Thursday, Pine River, and then Commissioner Bailey and I have a health board meeting coming up. Here, I think next week, I believe it is. Alrighty. Let's see, we're moving on to new business. Is Marcus on the line at all yet?
I am. I am. I am Marcus Cheatham for Commissioner Lumberman. I don't believe we've ever met before. Health Officer of the Mid-Michigan District Health Department, which serves Clinton, Grashit, and Montcom. The other four commissioners are all veterans of the Health Department. They know us well, and I hope to get to know you the same. I do have sometimes shaky internet connection. If I do have to drop off for a minute in the middle of this meeting, I'll just pop right back on after I reconnect. So no worries there. So I am here to talk about the COVID-19 vaccinations, which I know are of tremendous concern to the public. We are at the Health Department completely overwhelmed with calls and emails and texts. And I'm sure you are too. So I, I want to do three things here. The first is I do want to talk about the scarcity of the vaccine. I want you to understand that there's not enough supply yet. And that's so you can help us when your constituents you know, ask you what's going on, you can explain to them that the vaccine is still in very short supply. And give them some advice, which I'll explain in just a minute, about how they can look for opportunities to be vaccinated. I want to talk to you about what we are doing about it. So I will be illustrating how this needs to be a community-wide response. All of the healthcare providers and related entities like pharmacies and others need to help with this vaccination effort. And that's what's happening. And I'll give you some details about that. And then there are some rumors that are circulating out there, and I will tell you about those. So again, you can help if you do get asked by your constituents about these rumors. You'll have the, you'll at least have what the Health Department knows. I don't want to say the truth because we're not, everything's changing from minute to minute, but you'll know what we know. So, so first of all, yes, the vaccine supply is extremely limited. In our district, our three, three counties, all three of them together, we have about 60,000 people in Group 1A and 1B who we have to vaccinate. So that 1A is the healthcare providers. And 1B is people over age 65. In other words, people who are really threatened by this disease and need to be vaccinated. And then also essential workers, so we can keep the economy going. You know, the example I always use is the snowplow drivers. If the snowplow drivers are sick or quarantined, everything grinds to a halt. So we need to do some of the essential workers. So far, only about 20,000 doses of the vaccine have come into the, the three counties. And both the Pfizer vaccine and the Moderna, the ones that are here, are two-dose vaccines. So 20,000, well, everybody needs two doses. So that really means only enough vaccine has come in to vaccinate about 10,000 people. That's only about 15% of the population we need to do. And that vaccine has just arrived. So we can't do everybody tomorrow. It's going to take, you know, a couple of weeks, three weeks to get these doses into everybody. If you get your first dose today, you have to wait three or four weeks to get the second dose. So this is absolutely going to take time. So we've got enough doses for 15% of the population, but that does not mean 15% will be done tomorrow or even this week. It's going to take some weeks for this supply to be used. Right now, actually, we just found out about it today. Of that 10,000 doses, about 20,000 doses, about 10,000 arrived just today. A little over 1,000 of that came to the Health Department and 9,000 went to other healthcare providers. So one thing you can help me with is everybody's focusing on the Health Department. They think they're going to come to the Health Department to get vaccinated. A lot of people are going to get vaccinated by their own doctors. You know, if they're a mid-Michigan patient, they'll get reached out to by mid-Michigan. If they're a sparrow patient, they'll, sparrow will reach out to them. And then I'm going to talk in just a minute about lots of other opportunities for vaccination that we're creating using these doses that have, have just arrived. So here are some of those examples. So the Health Department has used some of its vaccine. We've given it to the National Guard. They've been going to adult foster care facilities. So patients in adult foster care facilities or adults who who live there are very, very vulnerable to this disease. So they're taking care of our adult foster care facilities. CVS Pharmacy has been vaccinating the long-term care facilities in the community. I don't know how far along they are, but I know they have started. Some of them have already been done. So that's moving along real nicely. That's, you know, the, that program actually is a federal program, but they are, they are doing our long-term care facilities. Then we have our hospitals that have been reaching out to their patients with the vaccine they have. Of course, they have to vaccinate their own healthcare workers, but they are starting on their patients. I am not a hospital employee, so I want to be careful what I say here because I don't speak for the hospitals, but we do talk to them regularly. And I think it's fair to say that mid-Michigan has started calling their most urgent patients, the oldest ones, the ones with pre-existing conditions, and starting to, trying to get them scheduled when they have vaccine available. That process has started. So the Health Department does have some ongoing clinics for people in the group over 65. So this is very important for our seniors to know. We are working on our 1B population, people over age 65. These folks call us every day. It breaks my heart. And I do want to say, you know, we get literally thousands of calls coming into the Health Department. So we, we have a big crew answering the phones, but most of those calls actually don't get answered. There's just too many calls. But I do want this population to know we are vaccinating them. Excuse me. And then we did get, as I said, 1,000 more doses today. And we'll be doing clinics this week. Excuse me, for some of the essential workers. I can't be more specific. I'm just going to say essential workers this week. And I need to tell you the reason why I can't be more specific in a public meeting, because if I say it's going to be a clinic and it's going to be, we'll be in the parking lot at the Alma Library on Thursday. What will happen is, we know this already from sad experience. People will show up at the Alma Library on Thursday and demand to be vaccinated. And they won't be eligible because these essential workers who will be coming, they'll be reached out to by their employer. Some of them will be public employees. Not just private employees. Public employees will be invited, but they'll be reached out to. Their names will be on the list, and we won't have vaccine for the general public. So this is why I can't be more specific. But we're doing all we can with the clinics for the over 65 and these clinics for our essential workers. We have all this information that we can make available on our website. That's mmhd.org. You can go there and you can see the Health Department clinics. You can see that they're full. Occasionally, somebody cancels an appointment and an appointment will open up, but that's rare. So I'm not encouraging people to just keep going to the website because you'll get very mad at us if you do that. We also have the links to the hospitals. Of course, you can go straight to them yourself. But we do have the links with the information there for folks. So we're hoping it'll be a one-stop shop for all the opportunities. And then, so the last thing I do want to say, there are two rumors that are out there. One is that there is vaccine in Michigan where the vaccine went out of temperature range and it's spoiled. And we want you to know that there's been no vaccine that's come into our three counties that was ever out of temperature range. There's no spoiled vaccine. There were a few health departments that did elsewhere that received vaccine out of range. They identified the problem immediately. They tossed that vaccine and they've ordered replacement. Unfortunately, there was replacement available. So no one is in danger of spoiled vaccine. And then the other thing is, some of the newspapers reported that there were unusual side effects from the COVID vaccine in California. So that they stopped doing the vaccinations. And it was associated with a specific lot of the vaccine. So for your rumor control, the first is that upon further investigation, it was determined these reactions were just normal and that there has not been a problem with the vaccine. Sometimes, just unusually, you'll get, you know, three, four people at once who have a bad reaction, and that's just a statistical anomaly. The side effects continue to be incredibly rare with this vaccine, and that's very comforting from folks. And also, if people were worried about this bad lot, none of it came to Michigan anyway. So there's no spoiled vaccine, and so far, no unusual side effects have been seen. So if your constituents ask you about that, please, please help us with that. So that's my report. Please help us by reminding folks the vaccine is scarce. Encourage them to be patient. Encourage them to visit our website. If they just want to Google the Grashit County Health Department, that'll work fine. They don't have to remember mid-Michigan. Grashit County will work just fine. Please remind folks that the response is a community partnership. The Health Department is vaccinating. Hospitals are vaccinating. Pharmacies have got vaccine. Kroger and Meyer are standing up programs as we speak, although they don't have enough yet. And then please help us with the rumors. As far as we have been able to determine, the vaccine is still safe. And no one needs to worry about side effects or spoiled vaccine. That's my report.
Alrighty, any questions for Marcus? I had a couple of quick ones. The 60,000 that you need, is that for 1A and 1B?
Correct, and it's for all three counties. And one, so one thing I'll say is, you don't have to only look for vaccination in your own county. You should be able to go anywhere within our jurisdiction, but actually anywhere at all. You know, so if
Oh, froze up. Maybe give him a minute, see if he'll come back.
Who's frozen?
Marcus is.
Yeah, I think Marcus has a pretty good issue, so.
Angie? I think she's...
She's moving.
Am I back?
Yeah, you're back.
Okay. It's...
Kids must be home getting on the internet.
Oh, here he's back. No voice.
Okay, let's try that. My Zoom actually crashed. So let's see if I'm stable. Commissioner, you asked about the 60,000. So that's for the whole jurisdiction. And you can get vaccinated anywhere you want to. So if folks need to go to Mont Calm or Clinton or Isabella, they can do that. And I think I'm still frozen, aren't I?
No, we can hear you.
Okay, good.
We can hear you. And then I was just wondering, are the school employees included in that or is that something additional?
Well, so we don't have enough vaccine for all the school employees. We have vaccine for some. So if I was to say school employees, we'd get inundated with calls from all the school employees. So I'll just say essential workers.
Okay, I got you.
Marcus, I was just wondering, who's the guy that sorts this out? I mean, when they bring, who sorts it out above us to say the health department gets so much and Grasset Community Hospital gets so much and Clinton Memorial gets so much? Who sorts that out?
So there is a group that advises the Department of Health and Human Services. The Director of Immunizations is Bob Swanson. And one thing, you know, this pandemic has been horrible, but one good thing that's happened is that we meet regularly with Swanson and MDHHS. And he's really trying to release the vaccine based on population to make sure that small communities like Grasset don't get overlooked. And he is acutely aware of the problems of rural communities and wants to make sure that it's done fairly. We talk to him weekly, Commissioner Smith.
And one other rumor that I heard in Clinton County was that just your nurses were the only ones giving the shot. So I'm glad to hear that the hospitals are getting some. And I was going to ask you about that, but the hospitals and CVS Pharmacy and stuff are getting some.
Yes.
Because I said that we don't have enough nurses.
Yep, and the National Guard are doing it. And so far, we have had, one of the great things, another great thing about the pandemic, if something as horrible as this can be great. So many people have volunteered, Commissioner, to help us with vaccinations. We can't possibly use them all. With only a few thousand doses of vaccine, we couldn't possibly use them all. Now, by the time we get to February, it's going to start to really open up. And so we'll be using those volunteers. So not only will we have hospitals, pharmacies, others, but so many people have volunteered. We did use some school nurses in Grasset County last week. They volunteered, and so we used the school nurses. But it's really going to open up here as we get into the next few weeks.
A quick question. We've got a number of people from Florida that are down here. And they had called me, and they're not even in my district, but they had called me about can they get the shot here? And if they come home beforehand, can they get the second shot there?
Yeah. I can't speak for Florida.
Well, they'll get the shot here, apparently.
Yeah.
They'll give you one the shot. They've got a lot of vaccine, apparently.
Yes, they will get, you know, some kind of a record. I don't think we'll get their electronic record from Florida. We don't interface with most states. But if they bring their physical record, absolutely. Yeah, absolutely. And if anybody gives them any guff, you just send them to me.
All righty.
It's the banister community there, George over in your area. There's about 20 of them that live in one park. And they said, well, we'll just go see them and see if we can get it here. And we go home early, we can get it there. I said, I'm not sure.
Yeah.
All righty, anything else for anybody? Well, thank you, Marcus.
Thank you.
Want to say we appreciate, I appreciate the fantastic work that you and your department are doing and will be doing.
Now, thank you very much. And I, you know, it's not just the health department. The schools have been going for a whole year. You know, emergency management, first responders. So it's really a whole community effort.
Yep, for sure. All righty, let's move on then. Matt, you have your cell phone report, a policy report?
Yep, I do. I do. Good evening, everybody. I wanted to start off just by kind of going over very briefly and then offering the commissioners the opportunity to ask questions about it rather than go into it in too much detail. But as far as background information, we have about 50 to 60 active cellular lines on our cellular contract right now, which is we use Verizon and we kind of piggyback off the state of Michigan's MyDeal program. And it's feature phones, it's smartphones, tablets and hotspots are the types of devices that we carry. And one of the reasons we wanted to propose a policy is because really the use case for cellular devices has changed a lot over the years. These devices aren't just used to making phone calls anymore. They actually house data, access county data. People use them for email and text messaging. So we thought that it would be a good idea to kind of formalize our policies surrounding cell phones a little bit more. And they really, because they are like little computers right now, they really do need to be managed more like computers than just unmanaged like phones because we want to be able to make them adhere to security policies. So what this proposed policy does is it really kind of offers people two different pools as far as, kind of separates it into two groups. So the first group is Grasset County-owned devices that are only allowed to do, to have, to be used for like county business. So if you're issued a Grasset County cellular device, you wouldn't be allowed to do personal, use it for personal reasons. And you would be issued this device by the county. The county would pay for the device, the physical device, the hardware. And then the county would also pay for the cellular service that's associated with the device. And then the secondary group that we're proposing would be personally-owned devices that could be used for county business as well as personal use. And these devices would be purchased by the individual. They would be paid for by the individual. And then the county would reimburse them a flat fee every month to compensate the employee for business use. And some of the reasons we'd like to do this and some of the things, the goals that we're kind of trying to to, to do with this policy is, we want to ensure that employees are fully accountable for their cellphone usage. We want to make it easier to explain cellular device distribution to taxpayers. And like I said before, we want to manage these devices like we would our PC and laptops. And we want to be consistent in how we manage these devices. We also want to be consistent in how we assign the devices during employee onboarding, department transfers, as well as we kind of off-port the devices when people leave county employment. And one of kind of the things we'd like to do is make it so that employees have an approved method for carrying a singular device that is able to be used for county business as well as personal use. And that's where that second group that I described kind of comes into play. That way, somebody isn't juggling two devices all day, every day. We'd also like to help employees and assist them in avoiding some of the pitfalls typically associated with using a phone for business and personal use. And I think that having a policy that employees have to agree to really makes all of the stipulations associated with that very transparent to the person because they actually have the opportunity to read through the policy and sign off on it. So the way that we built this policy out is we looked at existing policies and our non-economic and personal manual. I looked at procedures, documents that I keep in my department that kind of are documented so that if somebody else wants to be able to see the way that I was managing the devices, they could go through those documents and see that. So I looked at those documents. We also examined other counties' cellular device policies. We looked a lot at county policy. And then I looked at some example business policies that other businesses have their employees here too. We also surveyed department heads to see how different departments were using devices and if they were using them for personal use and business use. And then we created a draft policy. And then, once we built up this draft policy, we solicited feedback from different department heads and elected officials. We had the go review it, and now I'm presenting it to the commissioners. And very briefly, that's really all I wanted to touch base on in brief. And then I wanted to offer everybody the opportunity to ask questions about specific things they may have read in it that they had a question about.
All righty, Matt. One thing I jotted down, about how many phones are Grasset County business only and about how many were, they're using personal phones for business?
All right, now, we have, like I said, about 50 phones on our cellular contract. And if I remember based on the survey, there may have been 10 or less of those that had some personal and business use. But we didn't, I don't really have accurate numbers for employees that may be using a personal phone for business use because it doesn't write on the county's contract. So I don't have really an easy way of determining those people.
For personal phones, who pays for that? They pay for their own?
If, are you talking about under this proposed policy?
Yeah, when I read this, it said there were 70 actual cellular plans on its cellular contract. Out of that 70, how many, how do you divide that up? Is it 70 that we pay for on that?
Yep, so in the memo, the 70 active cellular devices, that would, those are all in Grasset County's, writing on Grasset County's cellular contract right now. And of those, you know, all of those are being used for county business. But a subset of those, probably less than 10, would be mixed use right now.
Less than 10, you said?
Yeah.
Would be, I'm sorry, I can't hear you very well on this today.
Sorry, yep, less than 10 of those would be mixed use.
Is it possible?
Go ahead.
No, go ahead, you said.
No, that's all right.
Okay, is it possible to get a list of everybody that does have a phone? Whether it's county or their phone?
I would have to ask employees to offer, if it's something that's not on the county's contract, I would have to, I guess, survey the employees and ask them if they're using it for business use. But I would say the majority of them wouldn't be only because they, most people would have to ask me to somehow connect it to a county, to county information.
Matt, why don't you go ahead? And I mean, there's some information that we have. Go ahead and share those lists with Commissioner Bunting, but qualify what it does include and what it doesn't.
Okay.
Yeah, that's the other thing I wondered about is how many of these are doing, how many have Google or emails and all that kind of stuff on it?
Well, Jan, we issue smartphones, so they're all going to have that. There's going to be that capability. And as Matt said at the beginning, these phones are operating as many computers now. So you should assume that that service is available.
Yeah. But that's why I wondered if there's some there that just need a telephone and don't need that on it. Because you're paying for, there might be some people that have a phone that's not even using the email and we're still paying for it, I would think.
Yeah, the, I would say that very few of them might fall into that. We do have a few feature phones on our policy where it's kind of a pay-as-you-go, you only pay for the number of calls or texts you receive. But most of the devices that we assign are smartphones. And they are smartphones because the individuals do use email on them or they do text message on them. And there's not really anything that sits in between a feature phone that has like the nine-digit keypad and a smartphone. That, if somebody wants to text on it, they want to, they want to get a smartphone so they can actually have a keyboard rather than just use the old style of texting somebody with that nine-digit keypad.
Man, I think the hardest, the hardest thing would be when you start this policy is to, those folks that have smartphones, which are probably using them for personal business, to have them decide they want to keep that. And then how do you limit that? How do you look at that business that they're doing versus, and then we pay the whole thing versus saying, here, you use your phone and we're going to give you $30 a month or whatever? That would probably be the best way to get to it if you could do that, you know? But I think like the police and things like that, I'm sure they, everybody probably uses them for their own use. You know, the ones that we have issued phones to. And I don't know how you sort that out in the beginning. How will you do that, do you think? I mean, how, if I had a county phone and I said to you, I could use a minimal for, how are you going to say, okay, Sam, you need to pay for it by yourself and I'll give you $30 reimbursement versus saying, Sam, I'll pay everything for it. Because what you're doing now, you know, if I had a county phone.
Yeah, so if, under this policy, the way that we would sort that out is we would, we would, you know, give you, it gets really complicated because it's devices, the service, the cellphone number. So the way that it's written in the policy, we would, you know, they could pick a new number if they want to do. The county administrator could allow them to port them out. And then, you know, it would be on their cellular contract and then we would reimburse them for that. As far as the physical hardware, the way that the policy's written says that if the county doesn't have use for that hardware anymore, we could, you know, allow somebody to purchase that hardware from the county at whatever the going rate for that hardware would be. So in the example of somebody that's got a phone right now under the county contract and we want them to take, you know, they want to take that phone out, they would, they would have the opportunity to purchase the hardware because we wouldn't need that hardware anymore. And they would, you know, we would reimburse them the $35 flat rate as they pay for that.
And that's one of the things that, we didn't have any policy dictating that. And we were very uncomfortable and we were kind of making it up. So we really didn't have anything to rely on for the decisions we were making. And as the distribution of these phones has increased, you know, not too many years ago, it was just a handful of people that had these. And now it's becoming really one of the essential tools of more and more people. So we're getting lots of scenarios. First, on business use. The person owns the phone or we own the phone and we allow them some personal use. People want to bring in their previous cellphone numbers or they want to take the number out. They want to take the phone with them. I mean, all of these things come up. So if you think the cellphone policy and its implementation enforcement is complicated, and it is, imagine trying to navigate all of these issues without any policy governing the decisions and certainly the consistency of those.
Yeah, the getting from here to there may be a little bit messy, but at least once we've gone through this, we're all there. And we, you know, if we wanted to move to something else, it wouldn't be as messy in the future because it would all be under at least some type of policy.
I do think you'll have bumps in the roads implementing this, but I think, like you say, at the end, everybody will have a clear plan for it to operate. And I think that's probably a good thing. And I would make that motion.
All righty, any other questions?
So, do we want to move forward with this or do we want to review it?
I made, I made a motion that we move forward with this and let them work the bugs out of it.
Yeah, George supports it.
Alright, so we have a motion on the floor by Smith, support by Bailey. Any additional comment? Let's have the clerk call the roll then.
Commissioner Smith?
Yes.
Commissioner Bailey?
Yes.
Commissioner Bunting?
Yes.
Commissioner Lumberman?
Yes.
Commissioner Murphy?
Yes.
Commissioner Murphy, there is a companion issue, if I could raise that very quickly. And that is that in our non-economic benefits manual at page twenty-five, section two, B3, we do have a cell phone policy, but it's not nifty as complete. It's in fact what we have needed to supplement and fix, and that is what this policy is. I'm asking for this board to rescind the existing sparse cell phone policy again in our non-economic annual, page twenty-five, section two.
It's on page twenty-five, it's on page twenty-eight. Is that what you guys have?
Whatever the page number, it's the cell phone policy, non-economic benefits manual, page twenty-five, section two, B3. Forgive me if I, I just looked it up online and came up with page twenty-five, but it's a cell phone policy of whatever page.
I moved that, we rescind that.
I second it.
Okay, we have a motion by Commissioner Smith, seconded by Commissioner Lumberman. Any further discussion? This is saying that we're replacing the policy we just passed is replacing this policy.
Yes, and it will be placed differently. We will just take it out of the non-economics benefits policy and we will include it in the list of policies that also appear, yeah, I think it's on the human resources page. It would be a numbered policy.
Okay, any, any further discussion on this? And if we could have the clerk call the roll, please?
Commissioner Bailey? Commissioner Bunting?
Yes.
Commissioner Lumberman?
Yes.
Commissioner Smith?
Yes.
Commissioner Murphy?
Yes. Alrighty. And we're moving on to elected officials' salary review?
Yes, excuse me. I've included a memorandum summarizing the issue for you, and I'm not sure that I have anything to add, but to reiterate some of the points there, there is not a regular, structured, scheduled system for review of elected officials' salaries or compensation. There is such a mechanism in place for every other category of, of employee or official in our county. Those folks who are in unions or are, who are union-eligible, receive a careful study and review of this at the time that the union contracts are negotiated. Other employees historically have received the same bump. Those who work on contract have the opportunity to discuss, negotiate salary increases at the time of the new contract. There is no such mechanism for elected officials. And, you know, they've had to just say, okay, it's been three or four years, and then maybe approach one of you or the chair, and then, you know, kind of come with hat in hand to a board meeting and say, you know, it's been a while and everybody else has gotten X, Y, or Z. And I, I just think it's a disservice to our elected officials that we don't have some mechanism for reviewing their compensation as well. I provided you three, three options of what you might do in response. And I've, I've indicated that I'm recommending to you the third option, which is to create an internal work group. And I would suggest that it be comprised of one or two elected officials, one or two department heads, union member employees, it'd be a broad base of folks. Understand that this group could determine that, no, it doesn't seem warranted to increase elected official salaries. So understand that this would be a review group. If they were recommending an increase, they would articulate that increase or document and provide their rationale, and it would come to you folks for review and approval. I also recommend that this work group meet at a particular time, year or every other year, say, May or June. In that way, there's time for that decision to be made by you folks and then for Chris to budget that or to place that in the budget formulation process. And the increases would take effect at the beginning of the next fiscal year, October fourth. As it happens now, this comes to you at various intervals and it requires a budget amendment if indeed you approve the increase. So I, I just think as a service to our elected officials, it would be very beneficial to have a cross-section of folks looking at this at a regular interval. And I guess that's my bit. I think, I don't know, Sheriff, yeah, Sheriff Morris is on the call here. He's certainly hoped to have some structure. I think he would probably address you again on this issue at our next meeting, but for now, just looking to get this, this mechanism established, whatever you folks might decide that it should be. Sheriff, is there anything you would add?
I'd just say that, you know, I would like them to see, put something into place. With the union underneath me, they get periodic raises every year or they bargain for it. And when you do that, and it's been over three years since the sheriff's had a raise, that then they kind of sneak up on you based on their raises and puts it into a kind of a vicarious situation. So I'd just like them to consider some type of mechanism to, to look at this.
And, and Angie, any thoughts you might have? Forgive me for taking over this issue, Commissioner Murphy, but also, Angie, we've talked with you a little bit about this and you have an interest as an elected official. Anything you would add?
Just maybe that we look at it, the same as what the unions are, once a year or twice, once every two years, depending on, you know, it doesn't matter even if it follows what the unions are doing, but just that we aren't forgotten.
Thanks for that. I think that's all we have, unless you have questions.
No. Anyone have any questions? I mean, I, I think it's a good idea to get this set up, but maybe we want to do something in the interim. It would be a good idea that we like got an annual report in April or May and that that then could be budgeted for October first. But since we haven't done anything, maybe we should look at it prior, act as a board.
Well, funny you should mention that because I, I think I suggested in my memo, and if not, I just meant to. I think that there are some interim increases that might be worth looking at. And I was breaking this down a little bit for you, first, at, you know, suggesting that a mechanism be put in place. And if, if you approved that construct, then coming back to you, and I don't think we would do it with the full work group assembled, but I would come back to you with my ideas about specifically what that work group might look like, what their meeting schedule would be, and also offering some suggestions for some interim increases that would be effective, you know, immediately or even retrospectively. But I can bring that information to you. But again, I would, I'm just, made the decision to break that out of institutions for you.
Is this something we could bring up at the next board meeting? Is that too soon?
Well, I, my, my goal is to get it to you at the next meeting. And if I can't get all to you, then certainly some. And I only qualify that because, you know, I mentioned to you that the wind litigation could really break this week, and there are also movements in the tax foreclosure cases, which I mistakenly began to talk to you about. So it would be my goal to bring you some ideas at the next meeting. Of course, I wouldn't be doing this alone. I'd have some assistance for that. I'm going to say yes with, you know, that qualification. But I, but I wouldn't plan to delay. It would be, if not the next meeting, then it would be the meeting after that. This is a priority in my view.
Okay, then, without objection, why don't we go forward that we're going to handle this next month, one of the next month's meetings?
Would you approve the mechanism for doing this though, now, Commissioner Murphy?
I, I, I believe that we ought to do that. I think we ought to put this in place and have, like you say, have it settled kind of in the spring, have this committee meet in the spring, have different people be a part of it, look at what salaries are in our other communities, counties, size, to keep these people in line. And, and then you'd have an opportunity to put that into budget throughout the summer and come October first. You need to look at something beforehand that, that we can handle anytime. But I, I think we ought to have this little committee in place and, and, and put that together. Just meeting this. I make that a motion.
Okay, motion by Smith. Do we have a second?
I, I'm not seconding it yet. Go ahead, somebody else.
I'll support it. Bailey?
Seconded by Bailey. Any discussion on this? This is to put the committee in effect, is the way I understand the motion.
It, it is to approve the mechanism that I have described in my memorandum into place, which is a work group that is internal, as contrasted with the compensation commission that's described in statute. Put together suggestions.
I don't get what you mean by internal.
That's the concept that, that you're discussing now.
I'm sorry. I'm having a hard time hearing you out there. What do you, what do you say in internal? Like when you say internal, you mean somebody that's in the courthouse?
Well, as I said, I would suggest that there be at least one department head, at least one elected official, at least one union representative, at least one employee, perhaps someone that is not union, but, but that there be a cross-section. And when I say internal, I am contrasting that with the statutory compensation commission, which I referenced in the cover memorandum that I provided you, that would actually be seven electors, people out in the community, and it could not be any of you.
Yeah. I was going to say, even with, you have to have, everything that we do in giving raises to elected official, it cannot be anybody inside the courthouse. That's a conflict of interest.
No.
I mentioned that earlier.
No, not necessarily. I, I mean, I just respectfully disagree with that. I, I don't think it would necessarily be a conflict of interest. I would add that if we do have an elected official on that work group, that elected official would be balanced by several others that are not elected officials.
And the others, are they inside the county also, like in the courthouse?
I really, yes.
Then there would be a conflict of interest.
I don't.
You have to get, it wouldn't take that long either, and it doesn't have to be seven. In the past, the reason they had seven, there were seven commissioners, and each person, each district had someone that represented that district. Now you have five districts, so you only need five people to represent for this.
I, I respectfully disagree, Commissioner. I cited in my memorandum the statute that, that governs this. If you do not go with an internal work group, you'd be following that statutory scheme. So I just respectfully disagree based upon statutory authority, which again, I've summarized for you and I believe I cited it in the memorandum.
Yes, you did. And I also had mentioned it to the sheriff tonight and to Mr. Bailey that it has to be outside the courthouse to give elected officials a raise, because it's a conflict of interest. Especially, you, you have somebody like, say, an elected official, and maybe they don't, unless you're giving out straight, maybe five percent or ten percent, straight across the board, then it would be okay. But to go down and give each one a different percentage would not be okay, and it would be a conflict of interest. And I don't think, I think that we waited this long already. I think even this next week, we have a meeting a week from Tuesday, or, yeah, a week from Tuesday. There's lots of people outside the county here. In fact, Greater Gresham could be one, if that's somebody you're thinking of.
No, they don't want to be involved in this. That, that puts, I, I'm going to...
There's lots of people that could do this. And I think that they, I think this is a good project to do, or a good thing to do, because a lot of these, like the sheriff and the clerk and treasurer, all these people do an extremely amount of work and get very little pay for it. And I, so I do think that we do need to put a committee together and do, or do a research on this. And I don't think it's going to take that long.
I believe, I believe there's a motion on the floor and a support. I call the question.
Okay, possibly do we need a legal opinion on this?
No.
That we can use a, a internal group?
I think we do need a legal opinion.
You have a motion and a support on the floor. I call the question.
Okay, I think we were under discussion. Any further discussion?
Yes, I'd like a legal opinion on this. I think any, any commissioner can ask for a legal opinion and they, and, and get it. There's no hurry. What, I guess I don't understand the hurry between a week or two weeks here to get this going. And I would rather see it done right. And you're, we're dealing with the public money to begin with. And so I think we need to do this right. I happened, I was on the board in 2000. And at that time, we had a committee that was outside of the county here that sat on a board, and they were the ones that gave the raises to elected officials. And a good, like I said, Greater Gresham would be an excellent person to ask. They are outside the county, they are not elected officials, and I'm sure we can find four more.
Jan, if you look at this, if you look at this salary real quick, you look at the last time, the board of commissioners and stuff, we didn't have nobody study that. We just, we just did the raise. And, and same with the drain commissioner, when we raised him. In seventeen, in seventeen, we raised the sheriff, ten thousand dollars a year, we raised the prosecutor ten thousand a year. We didn't have no study commission do that. We looked around what other prosecutor did. They brought it to us, we approved it. Alls we're asking here...
It was brought to my attention that is, at that time was brought, it was already done. But it's brought to my attention by my, by my district that it was supposed, they asked me, who was the one that did the study? And I said, well, we were the one that made the decision. And was told that was supposed to be outside the...
And that's what we're going to do.
Huh?
We're asking people later and that are involved with the county business to take care of this. And they're also going to give you a recommendation back to us. And we're going to approve it or not approve.
I'm sorry, I can't hear you up there.
They're going to make a decision on, on if we're going to have raises or not have raises or whatever. They're going to bring it back to the board of commissioners and we're going to be the ones to approve.
We're going to give raises. We're going to give raises. I'm a hundred percent for giving raises to everybody. But I think we need to do it properly.
I would point out that I, I believe the board, with most of you as members, have approved raises in the past without study by outside entities. And I don't believe there was a, a legal opinion. You could correct me on that. But, you know, if that sort of thing is a conflict, that this conflict question seems to be a, a new issue and one of first impression.
Well, why don't we give a lawyer a call right now? There's, we all know lots of lawyers. Why don't you give them a call on the phone?
Oh my, well, I, I think as a board, we're probably going to act on salaries, it sounds like for this year. We're working on a, a, a regular process that we're going to set up.
I mean, I'm a hundred percent for giving raises to the elected officials. But let's do it right.
Alright, well, we do have a motion on the floor and it's been called for. So this is to set up an internal commission in effect.
Let's call it a work group, if we could, Commissioner. Yeah.
Okay, I'm corrected.
No, I, I'm simply, forgive me, it's, it's, I don't want there to be any... No, I'm simply, forgive me, it's, I don't want there to be any confusion between the work group and the, what is called in statute, the Compensation Commission, because I don't want the public or anyone to be, to think that we've adopted the commission process, but that we're not doing it in accordance with statute. So forgive me, I'm not meaning to just offer an alternative description. I'm trying to help make that distinction to keep this out of the way.
I thought I had a motion by Smith to go ahead and set mechanism number two in the memo, set a Compensation Commission to review elected official salary.
We're calling it a work group, right?
No, but I think it's option number three.
Option three, Angie, and it's a work.
That's what, okay, okay.
All right, if the clerk will call the roll then.
Commissioner Bunting.
No.
Commissioner Lumberman.
Yes.
Commissioner Smith.
Yes.
Commissioner Bailey.
Yes.
Commissioner Murphy.
I'm gonna vote yes, but I would like a legal opinion that we can do this. Motion passed. Alrighty, next item on the agenda, unfinished business. I asked that anything, any policy change or resolution that I'm gonna sign comes back to the board. And I would, if no one has any problems with this, I would entertain a motion to approve this resolution. It's a three-page document here.
Bailey supports.
Did someone move? I didn't hear anyone move.
Yeah, Bailey.
Bailey moves the motion. We'd need a supporter, a second.
I second it.
Lumberman seconds. Any discussion on this? If the clerk could call the roll, once she's ready.
Commissioner Lumberman.
Yes.
Commissioner Smith.
Yes.
Commissioner Bailey.
Yes.
Commissioner Bunting.
Yes.
Commissioner Murphy.
Yes. Motion passed. So we're moving on to the regular Finance Committee meeting. I'll turn it over to you, Commissioner Bunny.
Okay, can we go out of this session? We have to go with this.
Oh, we need a motion to move out of this session into our Finance Committee session. Thank you.
I move that we move out of this session and move into the Finance Committee.
For Bailey.
Oh, Bailey.
Motion by Lumberman, second by Bailey, that we move out of our regular business and into the Financial Session Meeting. Any discussion? Clerk will call the roll.
Commissioner Smith.
Yes.
Commissioner Bailey.
Yes.
Commissioner Bunting.
Yes.
Commissioner Lumberman.
Yes.
Commissioner Murphy.
Yes.
Do we want a five-minute recess?
I think we're good. Everybody okay? Can we go forward?
Yep.
Okay, I call a meeting to order for the Finance Meeting, and we need a roll call, please.
Commissioner Bunting.
Yes.
Commissioner Murphy.
Present.
Commissioner Lumberman.
Here.
Commissioner Smith.
Here.
Commissioner Bailey.
Here.
Okay, I'd like to call the meeting to order and Finance Administration report or report. And cash balance in general. Is Chris here today?
He's right here. Yes, I am.
Oh, there you are. I'm sorry.
No problem. I'm up here. I've been hidden for the first part of the meeting.
Okay.
Just wanted to report real quickly that while our administrator said our audit was going on today, was their last day of the financial audit of being on-site. So they're gonna head back to their office in Elma and write up the report. And I have some more questions along the way, but majority of all the field work is, has been completed. So I'm pretty excited about that. I can trim the beard down now. Most people do the no shave November. I do the no shave for audit. So I'm gonna share the cash balance screens with you right now.
Okay, thank you.
All right, did that show up properly?
Looks good.
Okay, so what we're looking at here is our December 31st, 2020, our cash balances. We're looking at 5.1 million in the general fund compared to the prior year, 4.7 million. So we are seeing an increase in cash reserves there. Also, gains in our delinquent tax fund, our tax sale fees, and our resident, residence denial interest. So all of our cash balances are moving in the correct direction. Does anybody have any questions about that? If not, with your permission, Chairperson, I would like to move on to the check disbursement reports.
Yes, please do.
Okay, here are our check dis, this is our complete check register for December 2020. Now I'll give you a moment to look over the complete register and also have included the checks that were written for over $10,000. If you have any questions, I would be happy to answer them.
I had one question, Chris. The $244,000 paid to the treasurer, what is that?
$218,000 of that was the general funds payment back to the delinquent tax fund for the money that was borrowed to pay down the drain debt. And $26,000, the remainder of it, was previously deposited and had to be moved also. So combined, those were $244,000. We pay back the delinquent tax fund $200,000 a year plus interest. We still have $400,000 outstanding, just for those keeping track. Now I will point out one item that I did see when I ran this. We have two payments here, two intrinsic interventions for the same amount, one week apart. And this was something that went through the courts that was double paid but has already been reimbursed by this company. So these are, these are some of the things, some of the tools that are tricks that I look for when I review reports like this. If there's the same amount going to the same person, sometimes there's an explanation for it, sometimes there's not. But like I said, this already has been reimbursed.
Chris, I have a question too.
Your bet.
I see, I see several times that we pay money to Verizon. Is that from different departments or different buildings, like across the street and here, and maybe the health department or something? I see one for $7,595.21, and then, oh geez, I think, I didn't circle all of them, but I just wondered why we don't pay one check.
Well, $7,500 one, I can look, I'll look that one up real quick. That seems a little large for our cell phone bill. It seems very large for our cell.
Chris, I can tell you why you don't get paid in one check. Smith Family Funeral Homes don't get paid in one check either. They have them registered in different districts. I get about 12 bills a month from Frontier and Verizon.
I think it goes by.
You have some coding.
Address.
Yeah, you can't get them, you can't get them all in one. I've tried for 20 years.
Because I'm quite certain each of the different Commission on Aging sites, they, because they'll keep a cell phone there, or when the people are working there for emergency purposes, each of those sites will get a separate bill.
Okay. I might be able to answer that question if you don't mind.
Please, please.
I think that $7,000 Verizon bill was a slight late payment. I think it's, I think it covers two months. And then sometimes we do pay Verizon twice per month, and that's because Central Dispatches, they get a separate bill that covers the patrol car cellular devices. So it's not unusual to pay Verizon twice, but I believe that $7,000 line is two of Greshit County's bills.
That is correct. Yep, I just looked it up. Our October bill was 4,800, and a lot of that was related to Central Dispatch. Our normal monthly bill is in the $2,750 range. But yes, that is for the connectivity for the police vehicles.
Thank you. Another one is, there's, I see hats. What's hats? H A T S?
H A T S, hats.
Yeah, H A T S.
How much is it for, so I can find it?
There's several on here. Some are 530, some are 620, and oh, let's see, there's another one here for 40, and I just, I didn't know. I thought hats was organization, a women's organization.
That is coded to miscellaneous, so I don't have ready available. Give me one second, I gotta backdoor into this one.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, there is on there several times.
Hats is doing spade neutering for animal control.
Okay.
And I'm gonna make a note to get them in the system, so I don't have to do that again. So actually, donations that have gone to animal control are paying for this.
Okay. Thank you, Chris.
You're welcome.
I see a lot of the fleet card. That's when they buy gas and they use a card, right?
Which card was that?
There's your fleet card program. That's for gas.
That's correct.
Yep, that's what I thought.
So anybody else have any more questions related to the check dispersments for the month of December?
I saw one here. It was Dow Chemical Employee CU for $3.06. Is that anything special?
That sounds like a credit union, Dow Chemical Credit Union.
It's interesting to read all of them.
Do you see this vendor code I'm highlighting on the screen up here, C C R R?
Yeah.
When you see that, that's gonna be a restitution payment. That's how we code the restitution.
Okay, if it has C C R R 141, that's what you're talking about?
Anything that starts with C C R R.
Okay.
Circuit Court Restitution.
Okay.
I believe them looking in line, I mean, the checks looking in line. I look them all over.
Hey, should we go on to the next part of it?
I have one more presentation for the board. What I've brought to you, for you, is the first quarter expenditure to budget comparison. Now, what this covers, the first quarter between October, November, and December. So we're, that'll be 25% of the year that we've been through. This first expenditure report here is for our general fund. So what it's broke down by is each individual department in the general fund. So you'll see Circuit Court, you'll see District Court, you'll see County Administrator. We're gonna wanna look at what our amended budget was. That would be our most recent budget that was approved by the board. We wanna look at our year-to-date balance, what we have left over, and then percentage used. Since we are, I'm showing you numbers that are 25% through the budget year, we would expect to be at about 25% of our budget used. What I did is I highlighted those that were above 25%. Like Circuit Court probation is at 26, County Administrator 25 and a half, elections, 78% through the budget, which makes sense, because we just had a great big election already. And that's where all of our expenditures in the Election Department go to. Bottom of this, what I did is I grabbed the three departments that I felt required an explanation to the board, elections. You know, our election costs were completed for the year. If you remember, our election budget was at 78%. Information Management, let's go back up to IT Management.
Right, I circled that.
Here we are, we're at 58% of the budget has been used in the first quarter. The reason for that is because we pay IT rate right at the beginning of the year. We pay them, I believe, $95,000 or $97,000 upfront for their service for the year. And so that is, you know, of the 150 spent, 100 of it went to IT rate. So that makes sense. It's a front-loaded budget. And then the last is insurance. Insurance here, it shows that our, but we're at 114% of the budget. They owe us a refund. They do this every year. They refund us in March. And it'll bring us back down underneath what we anticipated, which was $100,758. I'm gonna scroll through this slowly one more time, give you an opportunity to look at it and ask any questions. But as far as the general fund, that's my presentation for that. And if you wanna ask questions, I'll answer them, and then we'll move on to the other funds.
So I'm assuming the insurance, we're paying an annual premium at the
That is correct.
Early part, okay.
That is correct.
Chris, I, I remember when I first come on and I looked at the Board of Commissioners and I don't know if John had an opportunity to talk to anybody, or it's probably never seen this before. First time I seen this, John, was, he's right, these county commissioners are making some pretty good money here when you get $280,000. There's a lot of stuff in there. I'd ask that question. I don't know whether he made that to him or not, but a lot of stuff falls under that, $230,000.
Yep, just for example, of something that does get paid out of there that you may or may not expect would be the county audit, the county audit, which costs approximately $30,000 is, is paid out of the Board of Commissioners budget, so. What, no other questions? Is it okay if I move on to the other funds?
Move on, Jan.
Yes, I'm sorry, I was making a note. Yes, go ahead, please, continue on.
Okay, so these, the other funds are special revenue funds, debt funds, internal service funds. Exact same layout where I have an amended, where we have our budget, year-to-date balance, available balance, budget used. So what I did is I highlighted the budgets that are significantly over 25% and I wanted to give you an explanation of those. We're looking at the GIS Fund, which is the online county mapping system. We have a Register of Deeds Automation Fund. This is a fund that has money put into it specifically to scan the Register of Deeds paper, hard copies. Drain debt. Tax sale, animal control forfeitures. So I started with a GIS Fund. Now, there's a project that took place to take new pictures of the county. And I believe they were using a drone to do that and that carried over into this fiscal year. So because that project carried over into this new fiscal year, we're going to need to have an amendment at some point during this year. Now, that is 100% covered by fund balance. So it's not going to require any transfer or be covered by the general fund. This is something that's planned for and money was in the bank to do it. The Register of Deeds Automation Fund, that was project-driven. If you'll remember, approximately year ago now, I think the Register of Deeds came to you and asked to approve a very large project that would cover multiple years for scanning all of her files. And she's just continuing to do that work, 100% covered by the fund balance that they have in there. Fund 305. That's this right here is a drain debt. We didn't budget by we, I mean, I did not budget a payment out of that that is going to be covered 100% again by fund balance. And it will require an amendment later on this year. The Building Authority. Fund 366. We're at 100%. What we did is we basically, we just closed down that fund and moved this $5,500 out of there because the board suspended the building authority. Or I apologize for that. The jail debt fund is paid off. The bond for the jail debt is paid off. So we moved the excess money that was in there back to where it needed to be. Tax sales fees, Fund 517. We're at 40% of the budget for the year. And the reason for that is because last fiscal year's tax sale was actually moved into this fiscal year due to COVID. The state of Michigan required counties to postpone that sale. So all these costs that normally would have been in last year were pushed into this year. If there is another tax sale later in 2021, we will probably need a budget amendment to cover for that because really budgeted one tax, budget two tax sales. Animal control forfeitures, there was a purchase of a capital asset which was planned and pre-approved by the board. They pitched in a little bit out of there for some of the animal pens that are getting replaced or the animal cages. I'm not sure what the proper term is for it. Then last one I included an explanation for was this Michigan Justice Training Fund, which is used to train employees employed by the sheriff's office. I apologize, I do not remember if that is law enforcement officers, or if it's correctional officers, or if it's both, but it's driven by training needs. So when training is available and people need it, we will use up our budget. It's 100% driven by fund balance. So at this time, I'll just scroll through it again. And if you have any other questions, please let me know and I'll answer them. Otherwise, that would conclude my presentation for the finance board tonight.
You did a very good job and I appreciate getting the, this early. The papers that you sent to me, so thank you on that too. And gave me a chance to look at it and compare it with the budget. Also, while we're into the meeting here, I have asked you for a list of the names of all the people working here and salary. But also, I'm going to send you a, probably tomorrow afternoon, another email. I would like to have the credit card statements. How many people do have credit cards? You might want to put that right, if you would just put a star next to everybody that has, or C C for credit cards on that list. And then I'll look at the statements. I'm thinking that maybe all the commissioners or maybe bring it to the meeting and we can kind of look at it. If Mr. Murphy and I are here, we can go through them and if we have any questions, we can ask them. I also need to see the statements. I'd like to go two months back and also electronic bank statements on that. And then also, I thought since we're going to be meeting at 4:30, which I thought to myself, you know, at one time, we used to have different departments coming in. And I'm going to arrange maybe two apartments to start coming in each month. And so I will with you guys on that too. Does anybody have any questions on the, on anything on the finance part of it so far? Do you have any questions for me, Chris?
You didn't, you said you wanted electronic bank statements. So I'm curious, do you mean you wanted hard copy of the bank statements?
I want a copy of the bank statements and also a copy of the electronic bank statements. That's people that you send money to or put into a, you know, move money around.
Jan, why would, why would you need bank statements? I mean, why would you need to?
Well, because I'm the finance chair and I want to make sure that my responsibility to check, do a check and balance on that, so.
The checkbooks or what, what are you going to do with those?
No, I just go over them and just kind of check and see if I have any questions. We used to get them. We used to get these. I think that since I'm the chairperson now, I think I'll start asking for them again.
I might have some
It's, it's been a long time since we've had them, so.
I might have some information that might be more useful to you than the bank statements. So maybe we can discuss this tomorrow with the email.
Tomorrow, I am working and I have a conference call right at 3 o'clock with Michigan Works because it's Wednesday. So can I get with you on, God, I'm filling up Thursday already. How about maybe try to do Thursday?
Okay, that sounds good to me.
Hey, Chris, if you, are you still here right now?
Yes.
Okay, can I see you for a few seconds when, when the meeting's over with? Not on that, on something else.
Okay, I'll be here.
Okay, thank you. Does anybody else have any questions?
Moving on to the treasurer's report.
Okay. Okay, I'm, I'm sorry. Yes, we're going to move on to the treasurer's report. I'm kind of
Hi, Terry. Nice to see you. Are you ready?
Yes, I am.
Okay, I have submitted three reports. My investment report for December, the receipt listing report for December, which is all the monies that this office took in, and then the transfer history for December. Have you had a chance to look at those?
Yes, we have. I have. Have you, has everybody else? And is there any questions? How are you doing as the treasurer? And is, has there been any, any things that, that you need any help with or?
Well, I'm still getting my feet wet, but no, thank you. I appreciate the offer so far. So good, but I'll let you know.
Okay, well, probably let maybe the administrator know. And I didn't know if you have to take some classes or anything like that on that.
Yep, yep, I, we've already been doing those. And we're having the audit, of course, right now. And it's just getting my feet wet, so. It's going well though. It's going very well.
Yes. Does anybody have any questions? I guess one of the questions that I have, and I looked for it tonight, but I, because I'm working and it's been kind of a crazy week. We took out a bond several years ago, that 6.7. Whereabouts does that show up? We only pay on it every so many months, but I've always looked, sometimes I just forget to look and then sometimes I'm looking for it. Can you let me know the next time that it's on this?
Absolutely.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
We must be getting pretty close to, I can't remember, I've got a sheet at home where it tells you where the payments are due and when it's going to be paid off. But I got to tell you, I've been re-cleaning my apartment and redoing an office, so things are a little bit scattered right now.
Okay, I will check on that and get back with you.
Okay, thank you, Terry. Is there any other questions?
Okay, thank you, everyone.
Okay, thank you. And I have an emergency going on here, so I need to wrap this up.
Okay, go ahead. You'll need to ask for a motion to approve the
Okay, I'm going to ask, but we have to go back out of the meeting. Okay, we're going to end our finance meeting right now and go back out and come back into a regular board meeting. So I asked the clerk to make a, do a roll call.
Can we have a motion in a second, please?
I, we need a motion to go back into regular session. I'll move that.
I'll second it.
All right, and if the clerk will call a roll, we'll go back into regular session.
Commissioner Bailey.
Yes.
Commissioner Bunty.
Yes.
Commissioner Lumberman. Commissioner Smith. Commissioner Smith.
Uh, yes.
Commissioner Murphy.
Yes. All right, we're back in regular session. I believe we need a motion to approve the, the bills, the financial report, correct?
Yes.
Motion by Smith.
Support. Support by Bailey.
Second by Bailey. Any discussion? Then if the clerk will call the rolls.
Commissioner Smith.
Yes.
Commissioner Bailey.
Yes.
Commissioner Bunty.
Yes.
Commissioner Lumberman.
Yes.
Commissioner Murphy.
Yes.
Chris, any additional comment? Any public comment?
I do not see anyone that's ready to make a comment.
Okay, I have noticed something you could maybe look at. It seems like we're getting a repeat this evening, so you can maybe look into that.
Yep.
All right. Then I guess we're looking for a motion adjourned. Motion by Bunty. We have a second, second by Smith, without objection, then we're adjourned.
This has been going on for three days.